All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the King George County School Board Regular Meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Please be seated. All right, at this time, we will begin with recognition of our school meals hero recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Of course, it's been almost a year exactly since we entered life as we know it within the pandemic. And one of the accomplishments our school division has made is related to food, school food service and providing nourishment for our children during this time of pandemic. And quietly, but steadfastly, we've had several of our food service folks, our transportation folks early on, and certainly our leadership in their school food service department step up and continuously provide nourishment for our students in our community. And for that, we want to take an opportunity to recognize on their behalf and her own Ms. Anita Davis. Ms. Davis, would you be kind enough to come up here to the front so we can get you on TV? For our community. But Ms. Davis heads up our school food service operation. I can tell you that that is no small feat. They have served tens of thousands of meals, I think, in the last year, and I may be even understating that to our community, I'm sure I am. But I'll share with you, you know, certainly there's verbiage here on the No Kid Hungry for Virginia program that generically describes the effort statewide. But personally, I can share with you because on occasion Anita has come in and shared with me stories from the field, so to speak. But most recently, Anita, probably unlike, not unlike other colleagues of hers, has recognized that in some instances, we have small neighborhoods or parts of our community where it's just simply not possible for a family member or a neighbor to get to where the food distribution site is. And Anita takes it upon herself to travel roadways, sometimes muddy roadways, sometimes roadways that are muddy where she is probably ninety percent getting stuck with dogs coming at her. But Anita has traveled into places where she knows there's a need to make sure that our children have the nourishment that they need. And so Anita, I want to say thank you to you on behalf, certainly of our school division, but on behalf of No Kid Hungry in Virginia for your steadfast efforts. And in doing and thanking you, I know I'm thanking many who have contributed to this effort to make sure that our children have nourishment since this pandemic began. So thank you, my friend. And No Kid Hungry sent us this really cool trophy. And if you can't see it, it's got your place setting there. And in the background, it is a chef's hat. So I want to present this Anita, it has your name on it. Again, it's on behalf of No Kid Hungry, but please know that we all appreciate the effort that you've gone to and the effort of your staff.
It looks like Beauty and the Beast. Somebody get a picture. Rob.
Come in just so y'all could say thank you. I didn't know I was gonna, I was the recipient of the hero recognition. Thank y'all so much. I do this job because I love it. And but thank you for the recognition and I'll share this with my staff.
On Facebook.
It looks like Beauty and the Beast, doesn't it?
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. So at this time, we'll move on to the King George Education Foundation STEM Program Recognition. Ms. Tammy Inseth is with us here this evening.
Hello, it's good to see you all again. I'm here tonight to to provide an update on the King George Education Foundation, as well as introduce our new program. For those of you that are not familiar with the King George Education Foundation, our mission, our vision is to unite the community, to enhance public education. And our mission is to create programs and attract funding to support these programs in order to make our vision of enhancing public education a reality in King George. To that end, the Board of Directors meets the second Thursday of every month. I know Mr. Collins and Dr. Benson and lots of school members have supported us for a long time and attended those meetings. We meet virtually or at the Fox Smart Center at the old Votech Building near the middle school. At our March meeting a few weeks ago, we elected our 2021 Board of Directors. And I'm excited to announce that we also voted to add a STEM program under the KGF umbrella. I'd like to introduce our Board of Directors and let the STEM Program Manager tell you more about that program. Hopefully he arrives soon. Let's see, okay, sorry, I have to read on my phone. So I Tammy Inseth will continue as the President of the Foundation. Mr. Mark Bradshaw will serve as the Vice President and the STEM Program Manager. Ms. Chris Buck, who's an audience here tonight, will continue to serve as our Treasurer and our Fox Smart Center Manager. Katie Poole, who's not able to be with us tonight, will continue to serve as a Secretary and our Innovation Grant Program Manager. Although not on the board, I'd like to introduce Ms. Pat McDaniel, who's also here. She's our fabulous KGF volunteer with the Fox Smart Program. So we thank her for all of her support. And I also like to take this time to recognize and thank Ms. Carolyn Felt. You all may remember her, she served on the board in the past. I'd like to thank her for dedication and service to King George Education Foundation and the community. She was also the Farmers Market President for a while. She's no longer on the board. But we appreciate her service as the Community Director, or sorry, Communications Director, Vice President and our resident Google Docs and webpage guru. She will be greatly missed, but we wish her well in her new endeavors in Charlottesville. She's moving to Charlottesville. So so it was at this time, I was going to turn the podium over to Mr. Bradshaw, who would tell you more about the new King George KEF STEM Program Initiatives. You may remember, you may remember him because he recently presented to the school board on the 2021 Space Camp Scholarship Recipient that his company sponsored. So his strong personal desire and personal experience in his career, longtime career in the STEM field led him to pitch the idea of a STEM program to our board, which we wholeheartedly approved. So we're very excited to have Mark on the board and thankful to him for joining our team and continue to do great things for our students, our teachers and our community. So I know Mark has already started collaborating with Mrs. Hill and reaching out to the teachers and getting a wish list of things that they would like to support STEM programs in their classrooms. He's got a great list and he and along with Mr. Robert Dibble, who know a lot of the businesses in the Dogron area, will visit them and see if they would like to fund, you know, our wish list for the classrooms. We do also intend to continue the Space Camp Scholarship Program. And if possible, expand it for, right now, there's just one girl student from fifth grade. If we can expand it to other grades or even, you know, more students, that would be great. So we're looking forward to all the great things that Mark can do for the STEM Program, our new STEM Program, and supporting our, our community, you know, students and our teachers. So those of you who would like more information about the King George Education Foundation, you can visit our website, which is kgeducation.org, our Facebook page. Or you can also, if you have questions or want to volunteer or get involved, you can email us at kgf14@gmail.com. Or we have a new email address for the STEM Programs, kgstem@gmail.com. I'd also like to take this time to remind parents and guardians that if your students need school supplies, we have our Fox Smart Centers fully stocked. So if you reach out to your school counselor or teacher with your need and they can work through, work through us to get that to the students. So we're happy to be able to provide that. So also, you know, thank you for your time and allowing us to give an update for the foundation. And we hope to do so again in the future.
Do you take PayPal?
So we did, we did in the past, but we can look into setting that up again. We also accept, you know, if it's tax time, so we can accept, you know, if you want to make a donation through your tax returns, we're a part of that program as well. But you can always visit our website and see if we're able to do that. We also participate in Amazon Smile. So if you shop a lot on Amazon, which I'm sure we all have done a lot lately, you can select King George Education Foundation through the Amazon Smile program as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Inseth. All right, at this time, we will move on to our Public Employee Comments. Ms. Rinko, do we have any public comment? Okay, Mr. Vance, do we have public comment online? One, okay. All right, so please state your name, address, and you have thirty minutes. I will, sorry, thirty seconds, three minutes, sorry. Thinking ahead to, I will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. There we go.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Are you able to hear me this evening?
Yes, Ms. Richard.
This is Yvonne Richard. I'm a resident of King George County. I'm a staff member of King George County Schools and I'm a parent of two students who have done very well with virtual instruction this year. Tonight, I would like to speak about the request that two boards, two board members continue to make about sending students back to school four days a week. I'm very concerned with this and currently, students in grades three through eight are attending school in person in blue and gold groups in order to allow for three feet of social distancing. This is the minimum distance that is recommended by the CDC. Staff are still being told that we must remain six feet apart from each other and from our students. It seems very irresponsible to demand that all students return to school and forego any and all social distancing. And by making motions with such demands, despite hearing from multiple school board administrator, or school administrators multiple times to show that the staff, and this also shows the staff that you don't seem to value our health and safety or that of the students who are in person. Additionally, you may not realize the amount of work and effort involved in making scheduling changes on the staff, but the additional amount of work on schedule changes seems very unfair to everyone involved at this point. It would be a much better use of our instructional time to focus on providing our students with the best possible instruction we can for the last grading period, rather than trying to come up with additional schedules and changes. I've also heard some of you say that we're visiting schools and we should be doing more. But are you visiting the classes of the high school teachers who are trying to teach both in-person students and virtual students at the same time? These teachers are working very hard to make sure that this works for our students in CGS, but it isn't an easy task to manage a group of students that are in person and another group of students who are online. These teachers are doing an amazing job with the task that they have before them. And I'm sure that some will suggest that King George is just simply behind in the area of technology, but I don't believe that's the case at all. I believe that even having the best and latest of greatest technology will not make it any easier to provide simultaneous instruction for two modalities of student instructions. It's nearly impossible. And our students who are doing this on a daily basis should deserve a bonus for doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. All right, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Collins.
I, last meeting, we decided we were going to discuss the April fourteenth and the next year on this agenda. It wasn't posted on this agenda. So I'd like to change to that.
We do have, we have an in-person discussion, an in-person learning waitlist discussion. Would you like to address the April fourteenth date after that point in time?
Or the April twelfth date, whatever. Two dates, we're talking about getting all the students back in school and last meeting. And we're also talking about start date and what that will look like as far as planning. And you said we'll do it the next meeting.
Okay, and throughout the course of the meeting last week, the situation, the conversation evolved and we settled on discussing the waitlist and the CARES two funding as the stepping stones for moving forward. Is that not sufficient?
So what, what is, I don't understand what the CARES funding has to do with the discussion in regards to opening the schools.
Okay, well, that's what CARES funding is provided for. All right, so.
You don't need CARES funds to open schools.
Say that again.
You don't need CARES funds to open schools.
Okay, so we seem to have addressed this last week, but if you would like, we can add that to the discussion items after in-person learning waitlist item. Would that be sufficient?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? We had a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? I think we had the discussion last week, but if it is the will of the board to return to the discussion, so be it. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes nay, motion carries. We will add additional discussion of in-person return to learning after a discussion item. All right, so at this time, we have the consent agenda for the minutes from the February eighth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting minutes and February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, special meeting work session. Dr. Benson, do you have a comment?
Yes, I didn't want to interrupt. If you had a motion to approve, then during discussion, I can just make some quick updates or corrections that will be added so that you can approve them as amended. Should I let me go through those now or have you complete your motion?
Certainly, you can go through those now.
Okay, so very quickly, just for the board and for the public, there are just a few minor corrections that need to be made to the minutes of February eighth, two thousand, twenty twenty-one. On page one at the bottom, under Public Employee Comment, second from last line reads why they, why they are not listening to the CDC and NIH saying children are spreaders. That should be changed to are not spreaders. So that will be added. Page two, third paragraph will specify Ms. Yvonne Richards as the public speaker. Page Yvonne Richards, the last name was omitted. So that'll be corrected. On page four, there are two spots where the last name of your name is, Madam Chair, will need be corrected as far as the spelling. Same on page five. That may be. And those are, those are the corrections that will be made to those minutes and posted pending the board's approval.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? As amended?
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to our action items. First up, we have the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two insurance rates. Dr. Benson?
Chair, we presented this last time. While we have been relatively spoiled in the last several years, as far as a zero percent increase, we did realize an increase in insurance renewal for this year, albeit a very, a relatively minor to, to what what we understand is rather normal in terms of a double-digit increase. But nonetheless, that chart has been provided with the associated increase for employees. The increase overall, again, just to remind everybody, was divided between the employer and the employee with each incoming a half or inheriting a half of the increased cost. So you have that table in front of you. It would be helpful, we need the board to hopefully approve that this evening so we can prepare materials for our employees to go out in preparation for the open enrollment season upcoming. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two insurance rates?
I have a question.
Okay, we can discuss after making a motion.
Presented the insurance rates, I was wanting to have a question before any motions made.
Okay, Mr. Collins, what is your question?
I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two insurance.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Collins.
The policy GCBC dash R. The insurance premiums. Can you, can you help me with this policy, even though I know it's on the agenda for later on, but it it directly affects that two point five percent?
I don't believe the regulation, I think, are you talking about dash R? Okay.
Tell me about the regulation first, even though it was not in discussion, but I'm interested in how it affects.
It doesn't, it doesn't have an bearing on the insurance rates for, for active employees. That regulation, I think, is on your discussion agenda tonight. But that regulation, the amendments to that simply support the concept that was approved as a part of this current year's budget and policy in terms of in lieu of a payout for a retiring employee, the opportunity for a relative decrease in their insurance premium in retirement. So it really does not relate directly to this increase itself, or it doesn't have any bearing on this increase outside of, you know, the obvious, if, if, if the benefit is to pay a percentage of the premium in retirement, that dollar amount will be a little bit more, given the increase. Not significantly, but it will be a little bit more. That would be the only relation between this and that proposed regulation.
So what, what is a not significant amount?
Well, it depends on the number of days that they have that are eligible to be redeemed for the percentage decrease. So it's I don't know, you would have to use that as the multiplier and that would be a percentage off of the total premium. Of the total premium, this increase would be a smaller amount, three percent amount. I don't know if I'm answering your question, but that is the direct relationship between if.
So there's a dollars and cents in regards to this policy as it pars in regards to the raise in premiums. This policy is directly affected in cash dollars by a certain amount.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But we don't know what that number is.
You wouldn't because it's going to be an individual, it's going to be, it's going to be calculated per individual and it's contingent on the number of sick days available to redeem, so to speak, for each individual. And it's on a scale. So if I have, and again, I don't have that in front of me, but if I have a certain number of days, I'm only eligible for a certain percentage credit towards the insurance premium. If conversely, I have more days, I may be eligible for a higher percentage. So you see how the multiplier will change depending on what need, what I am able to cash in in terms of my new sick leave potentially. So it's not a one-size-fits-all answer that I can provide.
But there, but there is a number associated with what it will cost. And so you, we want to okay a budget with not knowing what the number is.
No, I'm just, we're on, we're on the.
So I'm looking at the policy and, you know, the number of days accumulated. I understand that ten days available months of insurance and it's thirty-six hundred dollar benefit. And I'm going down to fifty days of sick leave. It's available months of insurance is sixty months and it's eighteen thousand dollars. So there's, there's, there's a, there's a price in the budget somewhere.
And certainly, when we get to budget, when we get to that agenda item, I can.
We're on the budget.
No, we're on the insurance rates.
With, which ties into the budget. So there's.
So, okay, so I think, so Mr. Collins, you're referring to page eighty-seven in the packet? The, so GB, Policy GCBCR. So I'm looking at the PDF packet. So, okay, so in the, the table that says for the number of accumulated sick days with the available months of insurance and then there's a benefit associated with it. Right, so you're obviously the, based on, I think the gist is that the table could be recalculated based on the new rates.
I can provide you an estimated cost for this year. If that's what you're looking for, I was simply focused on the insurance rate. I wasn't addressing this, this new policy, but I'm happy to answer that.
So the insurance rate raise, last meeting, you said it couldn't be, it couldn't be a compromise on that. In other words, you can't negotiate it. So what you're saying is you want us to approve something we can't negotiate?
I'm not sure I'm tracking as far as your the insurance rate, the renewal we received, it does, it does propose the three point seven percent increase in rates. You are correct that, you know, time is of the essence. So if we were to enter into a, there's no direct negotiating, that is correct, with the insurance company. We could certainly look at next year, entering now into a process to then compare or comparatively shop benefit packages that are out there in preparation for next year.
So, Mr. Collins. What is your, what is your end objective?
Is to know the amount of money, the additional amount of money that we're talking about when we improve the insurance rate. I just want to know the numbers.
Didn't we talk about that last, with the budget last?
I believe so.
Yeah, the increase was in the budget.
This policy.
No, but I want to make sure I understand what you're asking. So you're asking for, for the, for the projection for next year is something that we talked about as far as the total projected cost. And I believe I sent out to the board the additional cost, both for the employer, employer and the employee. So that information is, I think, answering your question as far as the overall cost increase for the insurance renewal next year.
So when we get to this policy, we'll have to make a decision whether we want to continue this policy or not. But we don't know what the costs are.
I can tell you for that policy this year, it's thirty-one thousand nine hundred, I believe. We've budgeted twenty-five thousand.
So that's the answer to the question I asked.
I'm sorry, I just didn't understand your question, that's.
One thousand one.
I believe, Mrs. Yerski, I think I'm, from what I recollect, I'm going from memory, Mr. Collins, but I think it was thirty-one thousand nine. I believe, Mrs. Yerski, I think I'm, from what I recollect, I'm going from memory, Mr. Collins, but I think it was $31,900.
Clarify a little bit. The insurance rates that you have before you don't really have anything to do with the policy that we're looking at in a little bit. The policy that we're looking at, the cost that the employees would receive would never go above the $3,600 per year annually, okay? The difference in your policy that we have right now and the policy that we're proposing here, the total difference in the amount for next year would be a total of $8,124.72 if you decide to look at this policy, okay? It's, the insurance rates themselves don't have anything to do with our sick leave payout policy.
Madam Chair, question for the speaker.
Mr. Collins?
So I understand completely what, what the insurance raise is.
The rate for this, what we're proposing.
But when it comes time to this policy, it will have a direct impact on, on, on a dollar amount in the budget, which you said $31,000.
And if I may say, the, the dollar amount in the budget is our sick leave that we have in HR, it's $50,000.
The figure we, we looked at today, that for the.
Figure that we looked at, if you adopt this new policy that we have on for discussion, I hope I can see my numbers in here because it's dark. Um, the new policy would cost you $31,655.60 which we have $50,000 in the budget. It's there every year. Okay? If we stick with the old policy, it's a, to, it's an amount of $23,530.88 which is a difference of $8,124.72 if you decide to adopt that policy. That increase in the monthly insurance rates don't have anything to do with this other than down the road, if someone retires, the portion that they have to pay for their monthly insurance rates could be a little higher than what they're paying right now. But either they're going to pay that little increase, or they're going to pay the whole amount. Which is close to $700 a month. We're trying to give them a supplement for up to five years of $300 to put towards their health insurance. And that money, we, we believe, we feel confident that we've got that money in our budget. We always have $50,000 in our budget to pay out sick leave.
I'll add that this was in direct response to a lot of the survey comments that you saw from employees, that we're looking for some way to, to increase the value of that unused sick leave payout. And while we, you know, we don't have, we have a finite number of dollars to spend, we were creative in trying to craft a way that those dollars could be of greater value to a retired employee than simply a taxed payout at the separation of service. So we believe the reduction in their insurance premium is a way that they could garner greater spending power, so, power, so to speak, for their dollar, if they choose. It's not, certainly not for everybody, but if they choose, this is one way that we thought we could augment the value of their dollar of retirement.
As a question?
It didn't increase.
Asked and answered, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Questions? All right, so we have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 insurance rates. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to the FY22 budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have before you, and we reviewed last week, the, the draft two, which incorporates the changes that were predicated by the changes at the general assembly level. I am prepared to present this draft to our county board of supervisors, and I would just remind everyone that the reason for doing so is because the funding burden for schools in Virginia rely on a partnership between the state revenue and the, the lion's share being the state revenue coupled with local revenue. So each year, we propose a spending plan to our board of supervisors. They then have an opportunity to consider that proposal and fund according to, to their capacity and in relation to other needs in our county. So you have before you the same budget that was presented. I did go back and verify. You had some questions about individual figures. I did go back with Ms. Williams, and we have verified that the figures in this budget are the correct figures. There certainly were, was merit in questioning some of those, but individual situations such as an employee who is compensated at a higher rate, who is retiring, and now we have placed a lower median projected salary for an unknown employee to be hired was the cause in, in at least one of those cases. So I appreciate your consideration, your work, your understanding. I want to appreciate, I appreciate all the input we receive from staff, the work that central staff and principals did in developing the, the stuff, part of the budget, so to speak. And I'll just reiterate that Wednesday, the board of supervisory advisors would like for me to present this on behalf of the school board. Their, their work will continue into April, and then if needed, they would call together a joint meeting of both the board supervisors and school board should that need rise. That's my understanding of their process this year. So I'll be happy to go Wednesday evening to present. My hope is that you all can approve this so it can be presented Wednesday. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Questions?
Well, it is an action item. Would we like to make a motion, and then we can discuss?
I move that we approve the FY22 budget as presented.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Mr. Collins?
So I asked for this information and provided it in regards to the SOQ positions. So we have 294.16 funded positions with a total of 347 actual funded positions. The, I, I must not be understanding the raise. So we're, the locality is responsible for half of it. Is that, is that correct or incorrect?
No, that's, that's not correct. So the locality is responsible for the match required. So the match required is really more of a, a result of our local composite index, which aims to provide for a 55%, 45% partnership between the state and the locality accordingly.
So the locality will have to pay 45% of each SOQ position?
In concept, that's the way it's supposed to work out. That is correct. There's great debate whether the LCI as a fair multiplier actually provides that for localities, but in concept, that is correct, Mr. Collins.
And the, so there's approximately 100 positions that will have to pay 100% of the raise. That on SOQ.
We're talking about licensed positions listed here, correct?
By having this in front of me.
Yes, it looks to me like there is, there's a difference, not quite of 100, but 294.16 compared to 347 actual. So was that 47 plus?
53.
Yeah.
So what, in this chart, what is the 3,226,000, 031? What is that a difference? What, what is the difference from?
That is, that is a difference between the, the actual budgeted salary for positions, the 347 positions and the cost that the state is affording us, the 15,737, I'm sorry, 15,737 number.
So locality would be responsible for 3,226?
Of, of this, of the difference in salary, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Can I just clarify to make sure that, but that's not just attributable to the raise. I mean, that's the total salary cost.
Okay, Ms. Pansier?
So you did answer some of the questions, but the one that I didn't get an answer on was the, almost doubling the athletic supplies from 15 and change to 28 and change?
That is actually a return to annually what's requested. You know, if, if we're ultimately not funded fully from the board of supervisors, then that may again be a, an area that we have to revisit and curtail expenses. So that's, the result that you have, the comparison is what was approved for this year. What, what we began with was more along the lines of the figures you mentioned, the second figure. So it was adjusted back.
And then I got a phone call from a constituent that said that the school board members were getting a pay increase, and I apparently had missed it. So when I went in and looked at it, it looks like we're getting a pay cut, which is fine with me, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding it because the numbers from 2021 to 2122 are definitely different by 7,000. It's on page 42 of the budget. I'm sorry. It's not on page 42. That's what you got this year.
Is that salaries or the school board's budget?
Well, that's, I just want to make sure that I'm reading it properly. Let me find it again. Where it's compared to the two side by side. Hold on a second. So, yeah, it's page 42 of the one that compares it side by side.
I see it.
So are, those are, are, are salaries, Dr. Benson?
I don't believe, I, I think there could be other things that are included in there, such as. No, it'd still be personnel costs, but it could be with clerks, that type of thing. I think it's all lumped into that category by name, but it's not exclusively the line item for just school board salaries. There may be other personnel, but I will double check that because I see what you're.
There's just, yeah, just a reduction.
Yep, we'll make sure, but I, there is no, just for the record, there is no reduction in school board salaries.
Or raises.
Or, or increases.
You can only get an increase in a year when there's two board members up for reelection that would have to be voted on in January.
So it will be the very same amount as this year.
Okay, and then I believe I had asked if I, you had a bottom figure as to what the increase in the budget was. We had that in mind. I got it. A to, well, a total increase in the budget for salaries only. I know I could do the math myself, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at that?
I don't know for just salaries. You know, we, we, by reduction or by the process of, you know, in that PowerPoint slide where I accounted for the differences in the stuff, the supplies, and the differences in the, the, the positions needed at the middle school, then it's presumed that the other difference, any other difference then is going to be attributable to not just, it's not just salary, but salary and fringe costs.
Okay.
But it's not salary isolated by itself, to be fair.
So process of elimination, I can figure that out myself.
Okay. We can help you, sir.
No, thank you.
I'm glad the school board is not under paid for performance. Plan.
Did you repeat that?
For a raise.
What, what did you say, Mr. Collins?
For a raise, I'm glad the school board is not under paid performance. Number.
Good motion and second on to.
Any further discussion on the budget as presented? All right, without further objection, all in favor of approving the FY22 budget? As amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Collins, did you vote?
I'm waiting for the next.
Okay, all asking, all right, all opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to our policy manual updates. Okay, so we have a series of policy manual updates that have been reviewed at earlier meetings. Do we have an, a motion to accept the policy manual updates?
I'd like to make a motion to pull a few of them for the discussion.
Would you like to specify which ones?
GCBCR, DJF and DJR.
Those, those are, I think those are discussion items, Mr. Collins, not action items? You said GCBCR, which was the staff fringe benefits you mentioned earlier, right? And DJF purchasing procedures? And one other one? What was the other one?
DJR.
DJ?
Dash R.
D, DJ? Okay, so two of those are for discussion. Only DJR is a part of the action item for approval this evening. Right?
Madam Chair, may I note that we had discussion opportunity for all of these policies last meeting? For last time, they were on the agenda, correct. Last regular meeting. Last regular meet, yes, the last regular meeting.
That is correct. Yeah. So, Mr. Collins, do we have a motion to remove policy manual DJR from the action item list this evening?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Collins, can you state why you want to remove that?
Well, the whole policy has been, is, won't be removed. I don't know why, and small purchasing procedures.
Because they're on discussion for.
I've just remind the board and the public, these are recommendations made to you from the Virginia School Boards Association. Frequently, there are, there are other guidelines that make this, that, in this instance, where, where language is completely strict and usually those, those regulations or policies have been superseded by something else. I do know that we have a local, what's the word? Or look, we have local guidelines or statutes ordinance that is, the local ordinance that is a purchasing ordinance at the county, and we do adhere to the county procedures, given the county facilitates our and processes our purchases. So if that helps, certainly, it's, it's up to the board if he would like this removed and then researched as to why it's been struck. We can do that, but if it does help, we do have a local ordinance that governs our purchasing guidelines, both small and large purchases.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of removing policy DJR from the action item list this evening?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chair votes nay, motion is lost. Do we have a motion to approve the policy manual updates as presented?
I move that we approve the policy manual updates, DI, DJ dash R, EF, EFD, GBN, GCBEB, GDQ, IEB, and IJD.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm in favor, all of them except for DJR. So my vote would be yes for all of them except for that. It would be a nay for that.
So that's a nay? For all of them?
No.
I don't think you can make a partial vote.
When you separate the motion?
We already did, and that did not pass.
Okay, then I'll, I'll say no to all of them.
All opposed? Okay, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
I don't believe, Ms. Pansier, did you vote?
No, this, this is just kind of silly, guys. And, you know, I mean, but what is wrong if he needs to ask a question to just remove that one so that it can come back up on there? We're going to have another action item. I don't know what the big deal is. We're making a big deal out of it. I mean, it's, it's a request. It's a minor request, and we're putting the brakes on it and saying, no. I, I don't, I don't get it.
I've seen. We, we entertained a motion to have it removed, and that did not pass.
That's, that's my argument here. That's, that's my argument here, I don't understand why you, you know, what is the purpose of not doing the request? Because you don't want to have to vote on it again, you don't want to give Mr. Collins the time to get it answered and then vote on it again, you don't want it to come up as an action item all by itself, one little action item?
It was already up for discussion.
I don't understand, I abstain.
All right. Moving on to the discussion items. So first up, we have the Special Education Annual Plan, Part B flow-through application.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Annually, there are federal programs that provide funding to assist us in implementing requirements associated with federal statute. In this case, we are eligible, as is every school division, for funds that will be provided to support our implementation of I D E A, the I D E A Act, that's the act that addresses special education needs. This funding, each year we submit to the state an application along with a proposed budget to apply for those funds for next year to support our programs. So we appreciate your consideration in this. Again, this is an annual item, it requires school board approval, which in part assures that we will spend according to the guidelines provided in the grant, which of course we always do. So your consideration for this grant proposal is appreciated. It is a discussion item, it can be approved next meeting, but I know Ms. Bush is here and I'm sure happy to answer any questions you may have tonight about this agenda.
Do we have any discussion or questions for Dr. Benson? All right, moving on to the Carl Perkins Grant.
Similarly, we also receive federal funding each year to support our career technical education programs specifically through the Carl D. Perkins Grant. This is another federal grant. And likewise, we must submit a school board approved proposed budget and assure that if the funding and would, or when the funding is provided, it will be spent according to the guidelines of the grant. And again, we, this is an annual request we make, just like other school divisions, to access the funding available to us to support our students as they pursue opportunities in the career and technical education field. So again, appreciate your consideration with this, I know Ms. Hill is here on behalf of the Perkins Fund, if you have any questions.
Any questions on the Carl Perkins Grant? All right, moving on to our policy manual updates for discussion this evening?
And again, just as you did last meeting, we provided a few more of the updates that have been forwarded to us on your behalf from your policy service at the Virginia School Boards Association. Ms. Elizabeth Ewing, the attorney for the Virginia School Boards Association, provides these updates to school boards across Virginia. It is her job to make sure that they they read in alignment with any changes in state statutes, any changes in regulations or or rules from the State Board of Education. Basically, and ensures that all policies are reviewed at a minimum every five years. So we have selected some again from the most recent update for your review. Again, these are discussion items, so you'll have an opportunity to, over the next couple of weeks, to review these and we'll be happy to answer any questions they have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Benson, any questions? Comments, discussion on any of the policy manual updates presented?
If I may, Madam Chair, because in fairness, the the regulation referenced earlier, the G C B C dash R is one that does have additions that we have created here. So please, I want to make sure that that one's noted, that is not a Virginia School Boards Association. I think that's the one Mr. Collins had questions about earlier. So we're happy to to help with any other information related to that regulation for you. But again, I want to highlight that one because that one is different than the others in terms of the recommended updates.
Any discussion? All right, thank you, Dr. Benson. Next up, we have our in-person learning waitlist discussion.
You're talking about all the policies?
Correct.
I thought you were just talking about the one policy. So I do have, I do have questions on G C B C dash R.
Okay.
Staff fringe benefits. So this is a new policy that's been changed, correct?
It is regulation, correct. It's been updated to to capture the spirit of what was discussed as a result of last, last budget season when we got the feedback from staff, and I think for years we've been looking at a way, any way that we could to try to again, afford our retiring employees a way to increase the value of their payout for unused sick leave. And so understanding that we have finite dollars, we tried to be creative, we looked for a way that we could do just that for our retiring employees. And an idea that we would like to implement, that we believe is truly affordable within the budget that we've had and we hope to continue at minimum, is this idea of providing a discount to the insurance premium. Our thinking there is that when an employee retires and they are written a cash payout, that cash payout is of course taxed. If we were to offer a discount in the insurance premium in retirement in exchange for unused sick leave, it's not a payout and we're not paying them cash, we're simply reducing the price. But in an indirect way, they're getting more value for the dollar or for the retirement payout that they've earned over the many years they've served. So that, that's the concept. You have the language there in terms of the actual application, the way that we have drafted how we would apply benefit according to the number of unused sick leave days available to that employee. We do believe that in time this will become more of an incentive for our employees who are not yet at retirement age, an incentive to to be judicious about the use of sick leave and not use it when it's, when it's not necessary. So that in retirement, when that day comes, it is of greater value to them in terms of the payout. But at any rate, you see the mechanics of it. Again, it's, it's related to the number of days they have available, they can cash that in for a percentage decrease on the on the insurance premium for up to five years, up to sixty months. It, of course, would cease as a benefit when a retiree or if, when the retiree becomes eligible for Medicare. So that's mechanically, those are, that's the gist of the language of the, of the proposed regulation. And also conceptually, that's what we're trying to accomplish, to try to benefit our retiring employees a little bit more as far as that payout goes.
So the, the maximum amount of payout is for increasing dramatically in some cases. So we'd have to carry the liability of, for the future liability of what cash out would cause in the budget.
Not the cash out, the cash out.
What, what the benefit would cost, liability.
That's true, that's true, but we have projected out, I think we went as far out as at least five, maybe even seven years to look at those who would be eligible. And we used as a proxy those who were, who would take advantage of it. Who thus far have said they'd take advantage of it. We still believe that the cost of it per annual, each, the yearly cost is still going to be within the amount we budget for payout. It's just that instead of paying in that single year a check, the employee chooses to receive the benefit over subsequent years, up to five years. And so that, that amount is really divided, if you will, over five years instead of all in one year, making it more, more affordable. But again, I think the big increase is that it's worth more to them, not in direct dollars, obviously, but in form of a discount, which of course is not taxed.
This is an option, though, they could still choose a cash payout for their sick leave.
That's correct, that's correct.
They can get a cash payout and get the additional benefit.
No, sir, it's one or the other.
The cash payout would be taxed.
They have to make a decision whether they want the cash payout or if they want to enter into the into the discount program.
So if you, so if you have if you have fifty hours of sick leave, normally you get paid for whatever it is. And so if you don't get that cash, you can't add the other days of sick leave as a benefit?
No, no, in other words, you could not cash up to the max, and then if you had days beyond that, have those be paid out in cash. You would need to choose one or the other, and you would receive that benefit associated with that choice.
I'm just reading this regulation, I was trying to see where it said that in here.
And their unused sick leave payout is capped at five thousand dollars?
That's correct.
So there's a change in this from three thousand to five thousand.
That is correct, for the, for the straight payout, that is a proposed change, to increase the value of the for those that would choose a direct pay and be done with it, so to speak, not realize any health insurance benefit, that that amount has been elevated. And again, both of these are in response to requests we receive in terms of the staff survey, or they're, it's there for your consideration.
So the V R S, they give you certain amount of money per number of years, service for medical.
I don't believe so in retirement.
Question is, so your V R S benefit, do you not get a certain amount of money for healthcare, even though it doesn't cover the premium by a large shot, but from?
This would replace that. Right now, we give employees two hundred and forty dollars a year towards their health insurance. So starting with this, the people who get that now are grandfathered in. This would replace that two hundred and forty dollars a year. And your question about, right above the chart, the first sentence says retirees of King George County Schools in lieu of being compensated at twenty-five percent of their daily rate to a cap of five thousand for unused sick leave may choose to receive this benefit. So it's one or the other.
Dr. Benson, may I ask, have the employee associations been consulted about this? Have they had any input into this?
Certainly input, I mean, there was overwhelming input in terms of how could we adjust the retirement benefit? That comment has been provided on surveys for years, several employees. So in that respect, yes, but have they been consulted directly about this? I don't believe so.
But this is not new this year.
No.
The numbers have changed.
Right, as, as a regulation, it would be, it would allow us then, it would authorize us then to put it into action for this coming retirement season. So concept, you're correct, conceptually, we discussed it last year. But we'd like to put it into play this year for this retiring class. But to do so, we would need the regulation from the board to optimize that.
And you said it's in the budget?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
So it was put in the budget, was a change without being authorized?
The same amount has been included in the budget as has been in the past. There's been no increase in the budget to accommodate this in particular. We believe the cost of this, again, the cost of this is going to remain within the usual amount we budget in the payout category. It's simply a change in the number of years over which the payout is, it's not a payout. The benefit is provided in the form of a discount.
Yes, sir. So being a board member and who's leaving in November, I don't, I don't have the authority to give future liability. You know what I mean?
I do, and I believe there's, there's wording in there that this is contingent. The benefit will be contingent on the approved annual operating budget. So if in the future, if a board fell in hard times and this was an area that they looked at as far as cutting back, certainly it could be suspended in that, in that annual, in that fiscal year, given the unavailability of funding. So that language is included in the regulation to safeguard against that, but it is a very good point that you make.
Any further discussion on policy G C B C R or others? Mr. Collins, are you, you're good, okay, anyone else?
I do have a request. Can we take like a five-minute break before we get in to the next one?
Certainly.
Do we need to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we take a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we'll take a five-minute recess, so we'll turn at seven eleven. Chair of its eye. We'll take a five minute recess. So we'll turn at seven 11. All right. Do we have a motion to return to session?
I make a motion that we return to session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair of its eye. We've now returned to session. So we're going to have a slight deviation from our agenda here this evening. Mr. Bradshaw has joined us a little late, but better late than never. So we're going to let him speak to us about the King George Education Foundation's new STEM initiatives that Ms. and Seth mentioned earlier this evening. Mr. Bradshaw? Just tap, yeah, there you go.
Sounds like it does.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And my apologies for being late this evening. I was no intentional, I do not mean any intentional disrespect to the board whatsoever. So my apologies again for that. Thank you for giving me a chance to walk you through what we're trying to do. We're excited about this opportunity to expand the King George Education Foundation into STEM areas. You're familiar with the work we've done with the Broadwood Scholarship for Space Camp in the past. This will give us an opportunity to seek additional funding from corporate sponsors and other donors to send more kids to Space Camp. But more than that, we're also looking for funds to be able to fund equipment, STEM equipment across K through 12, all classes, as well as potentially after school programs, summer camp programs here locally, or summer programs that may not be camp oriented, depending on what the ideas are coming from the teachers. We're wide open to these things as far as my point is. And we're systematically going to walk through that process to see what we can do to help any areas that we can with the county and county schools. So what you have in front of you is a collection of notes, a handout that I gave you. Basically summarizes our intent at this point. The K through 12 STEM initiatives will reside in three broad categories. First, increased investment in STEM and equipment and tools that I mentioned. Although summer camps and after school programs, which includes Space Camp, but may include additional camps as we come to know them and can evaluate their effectiveness. We want to make sure that we get the best return on every dollar we spend. And we have an opportunity to leverage professional societies. You know, I'm a member of the American Society of Mechanical Engineers and have been forever. And when I retired, there may be a lifetime member, which just means I've been there a long time, right? But I found out that they have a national director for K through 12 STEM programs, STEM issues, things that they invest in, things that they foster, and they provide for free as tools, services, and vignettes, videos, all sorts of experiences they provide out to the schools. So I've contacted that director and they're willing to share with us. And we're trying to set a meeting now to make that happen, to start that initial discussion. Maybe we can pull some things in in the fall. But there are probably other professional societies out there that do the same. So we want to look into that and find out what the American Physics Society is doing, what the mathematicians world is doing, what IEEE is doing, all that sort of thing. So there may be other things we could tap into here. So those are the three general categories we're looking at for STEM. As I mentioned, we are, we are, it will include hosting the Broadwood Scholarship from here on. My wife and I are continued, are committed to continue to fund that. But the foundation will manage it. They will host it. They will oversee the selection process. And they will fund it with the money we provide them. This provides the county with a sustainable process overall and a process we can use to apply to other donors providing money for other scholarships like that, whether it's Space Camp or similar things. We've established a very systematic and I think fair and objective process with the KG elementary school STEM teachers for selection for Space Camp that we can leverage and build upon in that endeavor. It also seeks to add additional scholarships, as I mentioned, for STEM students and others. We also plan to launch a very broad based funding raising effort, fundraising efforts on those initiatives. So what we're looking at here is making personal visits to almost every large company in the county, starting with the defense contractors involved. Now that I'm retired, so we'll start, I can do that. I couldn't do that when I worked for the federal government, right? I have a few retired friends that are in the same situation that have lots of contacts and are willing to work with me, trying to leverage that community, that network to see if we find interested corporate partners willing to invest in STEM in this county. I think there's an opportunity there. There's an opportunity because those employers have employees who live in this county, who have kids in your schools. It's also an opportunity for them to be able to show they care about the community they live in. And in recognition of that, we're going to obviously recognize them at the banquet we hold every year, as well as perhaps giving them plaque on the wall and that sort of thing, and on the website recognition. So they get a gold star out of it, if you will, in the process. So I think there's a win-win to be had here that we can perhaps leverage. So we'll see. There's no guarantees in this life. We'll give it our best effort so we can pull out of this. In addition to that, we're going to go after public and private grants. Now, those need to be, I've written a lot of proposals in my life and I've evaluated a lot of proposals and grants. And they need, the most successful ones are the ones that are focused with a specific accomplishment in mind, a specific impact identified in the proposal, where it's going to be, who's going to be done for and how, right? So we're going to work with the school district to make sure we understand all of that before we go write grants. And we want to make sure anything we do is aligned with the school district's priorities. Now, I'll talk to you about how we're going to do that in just a minute. Actually, that's the next bullet. So we have already started working collaboratively with the K through, with the elementary school STEM teachers across the county. They have identified their wish list at our request, identified their wish list of technologies and tools and equipment that they would like to have in the classroom. We have asked them to prioritize that list in the three bins for each school. So each school has its own list in tiers, one, two, and three, with one being the highest priority and so forth. That way, we know where the money should go if we get the first investments in. We also asked them to group them by functionality and impact. So you'll see them group based on cognitive thinking, mathematics skills, computer skills, robotics, and so forth, as you go down the list. We can make that available to you if you're interested. So far, that totals over $22,000 in wish list needs from those three schools. We're doing the same thing with middle school and high school, starting this week. Thanks to Ms. Christine Hill, we have a scheduled telecon with them on Wednesday to walk through this process. And I understand they've already started doing some homework for that, to pull it together. So we're excited to see what they come through on their overall wish list for that equipment and tools and capabilities. We want to pull all that together and use that when we go to do this fundraising campaign. So we can walk into a corporate office and I can explain to the VP or whoever is there exactly what we're going to do with money he provides. And he can choose what efforts, if he wants to, he wants to fund, and he'll know where it goes, how it's going to be spent, what efforts it's going to make, and who's going to use it, at what school. Okay. So we're doing this in a very systematic way to enable us to show value added to each and every individual we go to. But we're doing this in a way that's in line with your priorities first. So that list we had in the elementary school went through their management chain at their principals, and then it went through the superintendent's office to make sure it was concurrented upon before we ever received it. We intend to follow that same process before we take anything and actually use it to make sure we're in line with your priorities. Same things go with other ideas that we may get from the teachers. We're hoping to simulate some collaborative brainstorming sessions about after school programs or summer camp programs or other types of activities here onsite versus, as well as things we send kids to. It would be nice to be able to write grant, I would love to be able to write grant proposals that go after the funding you need to be able to provide resources, the personnel, the equipment, whatever it takes to host more of those kinds of activities here in the county locally. So we can get as many people, as many kids exposed to STEM in hands-on environment as possible. So that's where we're going with all of this. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Bradshaw?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that review.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. This really gives a breadth to the discussion that we didn't have before. So thank you.
All right. So at this time, we will return to our agenda for the evening. So I believe next up, we have an update on our in-person learning waitlist. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I did, I was able to email you earlier. We worked last week or so, or since your last meeting to examine the queuing at the schools where queuing existed and in those grade levels. Happy to say that we have looked specifically at, while I visited King George Elementary this morning, we had rather an anomalous number of students who were queued there in kindergarten. I believe we are going to be able to accommodate those students. This leaves us with just a single student who requested late Friday, who we're still working with to see what can be done in that case. Or if we need to await an opening for that student. But at any rate, we now have exhausted or limited the queue list to zero in all cases, except for the one I just mentioned from Friday. So if that helps in your discussion this evening, happy to provide that update. And I'll leave it to you all.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any discussion or questions for Dr. Benson?
I just had one question, I guess, following up to the queue. What happens now? Do we continue to accept people for the queue?
We will certainly continue to accept and have students come in where there is space. And again, this comes back to the very same place we left off last time. Right now, we are operating as long as we can maintain the three foot space with masks. We're accommodating students on that queue list. When we no longer can, and we've removed furniture, we've done, you know, the adjustments I saw today are basically emptying one side of the room, shifting desks in certain rows to the edge of a carpet where the carpet meets the tile instead of, you know, about six inches in. Those types of finite adjustments are being made to try to put as many students as we can, maintaining the three foot. That brings us to really the point, I think, of you know, of debate, of respectful debate here. And that is that to add more students, we would, in some cases, we would not be able to provide the three foot. It may be two feet, but it would be less than three foot. And then it's simply just a matter of, you know, direction. You know, I'll say that maybe I'm getting ahead of the board. I don't mean to take time away from your discussion, but I will say, and I think I need to say Wednesday to our Board of Supervisors, that for next year, unless I'm directed otherwise, I believe that we plan for a five day school week, that we plan to accommodate the requests, all requests for in-person learning, if there are requests for remote. We can certainly look to accommodate that as we need to, but I would certainly be encouraging everybody coming back in person, five days a week, full days. We would distance to the extent we could. And that would be the, you know, that would be a little different than what we are right now. Right now, we are holding to that three foot. So in the case of the school bus or the classroom, to simply open it up, and then we could see to the extent we're able to distance that point. Now, again, that is one person's, in my opinion, as superintendent to you. Certainly as a school board, then you can engage in debate and you can provide the direction that you believe is most prudent. But I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. I know that you all wanted to engage in discussion as a board. I don't mean to overstep. I don't mean to get ahead of you, but I do think that my recommendations to you, at very least, can provide at least a foundation for the beginning of a conversation. But at any rate, that is an update in terms of the waitlist. I'm very happy we could clear that waitlist, save the one student that will continue to try to work towards. Again, that was just last Friday that we received that information. From there, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification. I do think it really comes down to that distancing variable as a board for decisions you may have in terms of schedules and that type of thing. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I've got some questions.
Ms. Spencer?
So, Dr. Benson, so in order to accommodate these students on the waiting list, do I, I understand that do I understand that what you were able to do is rework the layout of the desks in the classrooms? To be able to accommodate more students in each classroom?
The only one, I visited King George Elementary. In the case of King George Elementary, with, when I went there with Mr. Monroe this morning, I expected two of the three teachers were there for the kindergarten level. That was my understanding of how they would accommodate those students. So to be fair, I don't want to, I did not visit Potomac, I'm not sure. I know Ms. Harris was able to resolve the queuing and save the one student, the same at Sealston, but I did not go and see what they did at those two schools. But in the case of the kindergarten this morning is what I meant.
So I guess we can assume then that that's what they did because they're still maintaining the three-foot distance, correct?
I don't know, I don't.
I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. Yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, we can just make that assumption because they have been directed that we maintain that three foot, correct?
Correct.
So, I have a few more questions, do you want me to keep going?
Go ahead.
Okay, so what is the average distance between desks usually be pre-COVID? What was the distance between the desks? Two feet?
Well.
On average, just?
Are you talking about elementary, I assume? Well, in many cases, we have tables in some of the secondary. We don't have individual desks. We may have lab tables, so there's a variety of setups for different classrooms. You know, for instance, in the kindergarten one, you know, students aren't always in desks either. That's kind of a newer arrangement because frequently with elementary students, they're in stations, they're in reading groups, they're in, they're on the floor, or they're up here, that type of setup. So rarely are they just sitting in desks and row, which is a good thing because that's not really, as from a pedagogical standpoint, we want students active and engaged and that type of thing. But, you know, a typical classroom, well, you know, I mean, from when we were school, having desks, maybe one behind the other directly. In the aisle, you may have two, maybe eight between desks, depending on the number of desks in the classroom. And again, that's all if there are desks. Sometimes there are tables where students are sitting next to each other, side by side.
So in order to get the kids back in school five days a week, starting in the next school year in August, are we going to have to reduce the three foot, to go under three-foot distancing?
I would think so. I would hope that we have a number of students requesting in person that we may not be able to, you know, to host them five days a week all day. Certainly, there would probably be cases where we would have to encroach upon that three-foot distance.
And how does that work as far as board approval? Is that something, if you recommend, since you're recommending going in that direction, is that something that we have to approve as a board?
I believe in our case, it would be prudent. I mean, it would be in line with what the decisions that have been made thus far. I don't know of a regulation that would require board approval, if that's your question. Technically, I think substantively, this board has made a decision in terms of modality and distancing those types of things up to this point.
So then at what point in time do we start to plan that? I know that Mrs. Harris had said a few weeks ago that they're starting to plan next school year. So, you know, I guess at this point, I'm excited and I have a sense of urgency because if we're trying to plan to do that and we're planning for next year, we kind of need to get started and have a better understanding of what we're going to allow.
Agreed. I would very much like by the end of this school year to have at least the information back from families so that we know who is requesting which modality so that we can plan and make adjustments accordingly.
So that modality will be presented to us before it goes out?
Well, the two modalities are going to be in-person and remote. Those are the two modalities. But as far as soliciting the response from families, you know, I think we need to begin shortly, in the next several weeks, begin soliciting that information from families again so we can establish the plan. Not establish a plan, because many of the planned factors are already in place. You know, the response to symptoms, those types of things, the health component, those are already in place and those will be carried forward. The key is if we can plan for hosting students back for those who choose on a regular school schedule, once we know the number of students that are choosing that, we'll know how much of the three foot or, you know, how much distancing typically we might be able to provide. We simply won't know that until we have the numbers from our families. But I do anticipate, and I'm hopeful, that the vast majority of our families are going to choose to have their children turn in-person. For those relative to you that we need to accommodate remotely, we'll certainly then look at that and make a plan to provide that.
Okay, Mr. Collins, do you have a question, comment?
Yes, ma'am. So thank you for removing all those children from the waitlist. Of course, I'd like to see no waitlist, but thank you for getting those off them.
I want to clarify, this was entirely, I mean, I appreciate it and on behalf of the principals, you know, I'll pass that along. I know they work very hard to do the very best, and they're going to continue. I don't want everybody to think that's the end of it. You know, if there are students, particularly in the grades three, six, there is still space. So the requests that we may receive moving forward, it's simply just a matter of which classrooms are more populated than others as far as basically. So thank you.
So in regards to your statement about next year, so I'm getting some contrary information in regards to what I hear, see, and research. The governor says that you have to offer some type of virtual next year, but yet some school systems saying we're not having virtual next year. So which one is it? Is it, you cannot, do you have to offer virtual?
That's my understanding. I can find out if you have examples, school districts, you know, offline, I can talk with you about that. Again, I think the approach, and I do know of school divisions who are taking, you know, a very aggressive approach in terms of trying, well, I don't want to say, speak for them or their motivation, but I think it's fair to say that everybody is encouraged that we can offer in-person, much like we have in the past, to students five days a week. So if that means that they're discouraging remotely, I don't know. In the cases you've researched, I'd have to see. But certainly, our plan would be for those for whom in-person, as I've described, may not be there, may not seem prudent for their child, we would work with them in terms of a virtual option, whether it be subscription through Virtual Virginia, whether it be through division-wide, we establish a section or two of virtual classroom to accommodate students in a manner similar to this year, but we would aggregate so that we could capture more staff to offer the in-person. You know, those are all scheduling, and I know Ms. Harris came and talked to you about, you know, the four days a week at the K-2 level versus the two days and how we set schedules early on to accommodate that, trying to focus on those younger learners for the remainder of this year. But, you know, that paradigm then can, will obviously then be abandoned to plan for a new paradigm entering next year.
Well, yes, so I did, the contrary information, I was wondering if you could obtain the facts, whether we, which one, I mean, are we going to be mandated to have a virtual scenario, whether it's?
Yeah, certainly, I can find from the House bill, I can confirm that that is the intent.
And so some of the information came from the Phoenix Star. So in regards to divisions saying they're not going to have any virtual, so my next question would be, how can they do that if there's that mandate? That's the information I'd like to get.
Okay, so I may offer, or suggest, before we go off too far into the in-person discussion for the fall, if we close out the conversation about the waitlist, since we did add that as an agenda item to the evening? So as far as the waitlist is concerned, are there other questions or comments? Ms. Oliver, you have any comments? Ms. Hawk? Dr. Benson, I was wondering, so the students, so if I understand correctly, the waitlists at Potomac, at Sealston, and King George have all been cleared, save for one remaining student at King George, who was a recent addition, that was the last, sorry, at Sealston, okay? And so thus far, the students that have been, and maybe prior to this latest push to get everyone into the classroom, or those on the queue into the classroom, but to this point in time, what have been the reasons for openings in classrooms that have allowed students to come off of the waitlist? Have there been students that have returned to virtual permanently, or what were those circumstances? Do you know?
I don't know offhand. I think it's a first, that's a good question, but it's a first cusion to, you know, the assumption question that Ms. Spencer had. I mean, I could research and see if I could find out the circumstances behind each case in terms of the, whether it's a new registration, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I was just curious, what were the, yeah, the opportunities?
I don't know. I would, I think it's fair to say the majority, from what I've been told, the majority would fall into either a new registration to the division or a request, a simple change of mind from the survey in January would count. There could be others for other reasons that I'm unaware of. But I think generally, those are the two reasons for students populating what were the waiting lists and the queues.
So I meant the reasons that allowed them to be taken off of the waitlist? If there were students in classrooms that returned to virtual and opened a space, or what was the?
I don't know, I think it's the very same question.
Yeah, I think he was explaining how he moved the desks around and got furniture out of the classrooms and just made more room.
Right, and so I didn't know if there, prior to this latest conversation, if there were other reasons that the waitlist had been cleared, but it was.
And again, I'm thinking of classrooms where I visited this morning, King George Elementary, I want to be fair. I don't, I don't know that to be the case, that it was a simple, not that it was simple, but it was as, you know, just a matter of moving desks in the other cases, I don't know.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on the waitlist? Okay, so then we can move on to the conversation we've started a bit. So we added a discussion item for our in-person learning from this point forward. Mr. Collins, you were the requister of that discussion item. Would you like to start the conversation?
Well, yes, I would. I don't have much more to add than what Dr. Benson said. He said that he would recommend that next year they'd be in-person. And so if that's the will of the board, which I hope it will be, then we need to start to work on that to get that completed. That was, we just wanted to be in conversation, that we know what's going to happen and the community knows what's going to happen.
Can I just add?
Certainly.
I don't want to sound quick to say that it's not a big deal to encroach on the distancing at all. That's not, that's not what I'm trying to convey. I am, you know, encouraged that I think that there are many factors. You know, we've discussed mitigation factors here. We would certainly continue, as far as the masks, we would certainly continue to distance as we're able. I think the data I forwarded to the board late today in terms of transmission in our schools, we continue to monitor that, and I'm very happy to say we've had zero transmission that I know of, save, you know, recently at the second, the high school level, we had an issue in athletics. But I'm speaking primarily in elementary schools because they've been back in person the longest, the K-2 students, and we've seen little to no, to none. We've had some students who've exhibited symptoms, but again, that's been, you know, under five in any given day. And the standard has been, there's been, there's been no symptomatic. So I'm encouraged by that, given the length of time we've had K-2 in-person. I think that's a good, a good metric for us to look at. Do know that if we, you know, I'm speaking down the line in terms of next year, if we get into this, or even this year, if we were to experience, you know, an outbreak or some type of blip in terms of symptomatic or what turns out to be positive cases, then we still have in our plan the ability to then pause the in-person learning for the period of 14 days or whatever would be prudent to give that, you know, to basically isolate that and allow a safe return of those students. Fortunately, we've not had to put that in play. But moving forward next year, I certainly would think that if we had to, we certainly would do that. And I say all that not to sound curt or not to sound callous to the distancing. I very much believe the distancing is important. I simply think that at that point, when we get into August, my hope is that we can commit to distancing as feasible or to the extent possible. Right now, we've, we're kind of in and out of surges, the vaccine now, you know, I believe is helping. We're monitoring closely this next, what appears to be maybe, you know, a blip in terms of our data. But again, I just, I want to throw all that on the table to understand that we've learned a great deal over the last several months. We know how to respond, we know how to respond quickly. Should that need arise in the future, we would certainly put in the protocol we've used in terms of response. I knock on wood, we've not had levels of transmission that have required, you know, a rather large-scale response. It's been relatively isolated, and it's been handled expertly through Ms. Fisher and her colleagues and our principals. So all that is very reassuring to me, and all that really equipped me to then, you know, make the statement that I've said to try to put your discussion.
Um, I know you can't speak for Dr. Boyd, but I think that one of the stumbling blocks that they had was the technology to be able to do in-person and virtual at the same time. Is that something that we need to still pursue?
We'll have to see. I think when the responses come back, you know, whether at the secondary level, if we have more than we would expect, that would prefer not to return in-person, then perhaps, you know, we could look in places where the technology might help. I don't think, and I think what Dr. Boyd was discussing was providing in general in every classroom, the owls or camera motion or trying to facilitate the concurrent instruction. You know, my hope is we would not have that need pervasive throughout the building. Instead, we could, you know, we've had many students who participated in Virtual Virginia courses at the high school level, even prior to the pandemic. So my hope is that we could accommodate students utilizing Virtual Virginia, utilizing even a combination of our teachers with their curriculum. But it could be that, you know, in certain cases with elective courses, perhaps we do need to equip with some technology. And I think later, you've got the CARES II on your agenda, you know, that could be, you know, we've put just kind of a generic line item in there in terms of supporting remote instruction. That could be a funding source to try to help equip where needed to facilitate that type of approach to those students.
No further questions?
Further discussion? Ms. Hawk, anything?
Well, I was just debating it, whether I should discuss this item of concern now or with the CARES II funding, because I think it is perhaps applicable. And I am concerned about the, whatever point in time we do reopen with many more students coming in. We are adding new tasks in terms of monitoring temperature and maintaining some kind of distancing as students come in the door, perhaps even more so than we have. So this involves certainly at the elementary, but I think in the middle and high school, the role of that, I think address them now as greeters, but they're really more of a first contact with, once they hit the school building, once the student hits the school building, that greeter is the first contact. There aren't many of them, but having said that, I don't know how many function in that capacity at middle school and high school. Do we need to look at that role in terms of expanding perhaps both the time allocated for those roles? In other words, expand those jobs to longer hours or revise the job descriptions?
Are you speaking of the greeter position?
The greeter position, yes.
No, no, and what I, what I see at the schools is that with the, even now with the arrival of students, you know, the temperature checks and those types, those aspects, those are not left solely to the greeter position at all. Those are, and I have great confidence that our principals will plan accordingly. You know, they always do, whenever there's a, you know, a task that needs to be overcome, they've thought through a plan, you know, our elementary principals work collaboratively, as do both Ms. Collins and Dr. Boyd in terms of solutions that may be applicable to both buildings. But to answer your question, no, because the greeter's not the one taking the temperatures exclusively. You know, that he or she may be helping in some respect. But generally, those are staff that are assigned as a duty to do that type of thing.
Okay, as, and perhaps as we get into more of the CARES II funding, that in my mind would be an appropriate sourcing for needs that are identified of that sort. Does that make sense?
Sure, but I think. Sure. But I think, um, well, yeah, absolutely. If, if, if we need to augment beyond our existing staff or what would be the existing staff at the opening of the school year, that was your name, please.
Yes. Yeah, that was my name.
We'll help you out there in a second.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Haller? Okay. Um, so no, I guess I am also encouraged about the prospect of returning five days a week in the fall, most certainly. Um, so forward to that conversation continuing. All right. So if there's no further discussion on in-person learning, we'll move on to our bylaws committee draft. So this was included in our board packet. I suppose I would ask if those involved with the bylaws committee would be interested in giving an or review or an introduction to the process by which the bylaws draft were generated?
Uh, sure. So, um, uh, essentially, uh, the committee, we got together and, um, we, uh, looked at other bylaws from other jurisdictions, which included, uh, Culpeper, um, Fairfax, uh, Hampton Roads or down in that area. I'm not sure which one. I don't really recall which one exactly. Um, we also looked at the Board of Supervisors bylaws. Everything taken in here, um, is either taken from the Code of Virginia. Our policies and procedures, one of the other bylaws, um, in some cases, there are two sections that we did have committee members that kind of, wrote out. Um, so there's no specific reference to those. But we essentially did it all on Google Classroom. No, it's not Google Docs. So everybody was able to put their section in. We kind of conquered and divided, put their section in. And then at the end, once we got all of our notes in, um, we just went through and, um, categorized everything. And this is kind of what we came up with. Is that detailed enough?
Certainly. So any questions or comments for, uh, with respect to the bylaws draft before us?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Collins?
So on 4.2, meeting operations, during superintendent inviting speaker presentation, board members will refrain from interruption, discussion or calling motions unless specifically requested by the speaker. I'd like to, remove unless specifically requested by the speaker because the speaker can't request a motion. That, that's one. On next page, disruptive behavior, under 4.4B, discretion of the chair, any board member violating rule 4.2, and may be subject to censure, restricted from calling a motion. They can be censored, but they can't be restricted from calling a motion. Won't strike that. Or, or cast a vote. They can cast a vote, strike that. And then 4.5, public comments received, the applicant representative, at the applicant's discretion may respond for further information. There shall be five-minute time limit. First off, I, who's the applicant? Is the applicant the speaker? Or, or the presenter? And they don't have a rebuttal time. That should be, the whole section should be struck.
Which one?
4.5B.
I was trying to figure out, may I speak?
I'll be done.
Let Mr. Collins.
I was going to give you an.
He, okay. He just said he had one more. We'll move on with the conversation.
I will, I will, I will, scratch that before I know.
Okay. Ms. Panzera?
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I do kind of agree after I reread it. I'm not sure under 4.5, uh, section B and D, it talks about the applicant. I, I believe this is something that was taken from the Board of Supervisors where they are actually placing in applications for new zoning or new projects of that sort, where there's a little bit more interaction in between. So I do kind of agree that it doesn't necessarily pertain to, the structure of, of how we communicate with our presenters. Oh, we don't really have applicants. Also for 4.4, the disruptive behavior B, uh, this one was, I, I think there needs to be a little bit clarification because it does reference section 7.1B. And I've been trying to figure out where that came from, but I think it referring back to 4.2 being in 4.4 and then referencing in 7.1 that we can either eliminate that section or clarify something more in 4.2A and 7.1B.
So I would like to know how, why we're questioning where things came from when this is a document that was drafted by the committee?
I don't, because I did not personally, there's a committee of five, seven, five of us, two, four, six, seven of us, and each person had their own, um, input and we had our own resources. So I'm not specifically sure where everything came from. We did try to put, put references in there, but through everybody working on it and through it just being modified, some of the references were taken out.
So I'd also like to know, um, the rationale behind developing this as a bylaws committee, which did not include the entire board, considering the board has not had bylaws that, by which we've been operating in accordance with. Um, so clearly as a board, I would imagine, I know I personally have a lot of questions and comments that I don't feel are necessary to dive into right this evening. So I was wondering what the rationale behind developing this as a committee instead of as a joint document developed by the board to separate the entire board?
As chairman last year, I had the right to do that. I specifically asked that any board members that would like to join the committee, that they email me. Ms. Hawk and I discussed it before. I had no emails from any board members as I had requested. And, um, nobody at that time, when I, uh, formed the committee, had any issues or questions at that time and we moved forward.
All right. Well, I would repeat my comment that I did comment in the meeting in which it was discussed that I was interested in participating. Nevertheless, um, I would suggest that we revisit this at a separate session, at a work session potentially devoted solely to reviewing and further developing the bylaws, um, at a work session at some point to be determined in the not-too-distant future versus, um, reviewing these in the midst of a regular meeting.
Madam Chair, hi. Would it be helpful for me to forward this to legal, resource that we have that may be able to provide feedback that might inform your, you know, if the board decides to entertain this at a future meeting, it might entertain your discussion or inform your discussion, to then propose, changes or to make sure you account for changes that may run, you know, may not be relevant to or germane to board work or may run counter to any policy, that kind of thing. That may be of, of a help to the board in terms of trying to make sure that your eventual bylaws are tightly coupled with your existing policies and that type of thing. You don't run into any kind of
Conflict.
So a lot of these are right out of our policies.
So why do we need bylaws that reiterate our policies?
So in reading other jurisdiction bylaws, they, uh, did the same thing and, um, pretty much highlighting specific areas so that, uh, you know, there's a, a, a commonality between of how the structure of the board is supposed to, um, operate.
So I would like to take Dr. Benson up on his offer to run it past legal to make sure that we're not, that the document is not in conflict with any other governing documents.
Madam Chair, I, I agree certainly, uh, that it needs a legal review and I, and I believe that there were, uh, comments during the board discussions, during the meeting, the committee discussions that, that, uh, supported that also. I think there were, uh, there were other discussions, uh, within the committee as to, uh, the role that Roberts rules. Uh, I guess the updated revised version of Roberts rules, uh, would play. And whether if, uh, we adopted the Roberts rules as revised, would there be a need for bylaws? And I think that's perhaps a, a legal question.
Well, I, I don't think that's a legal question. I think that's a procedural. The first meeting of the year, I requested that we adopt the Roberts rules, latest version. We've been operating under, not those rules or any bylaws. That's my, that's it.
So my, I guess my question is, do we need both?
Well, I can answer that. I think section one purpose clearly defines that the role of the King George County School Board is to govern King George County public schools and ensures the education of students to the most successful extent possible. The bylaws will establish and further define the rules of order and conduct of business. They will allow the school board to transact business expeditiously and efficiently in accordance with section BDDE. The King George County School Board establishes rules of order and may adopt bylaws, policies and regulations. And then it further on goes on. I mean, I think section one specifically outlines why we, we thought this was necessary.
Ms. Haller, do you have any feedback?
Well, I was wondering if the VSB was consulted at all or any of their
Yes, they were.
resources used?
So I called, um, Mrs. Bozerman and Bozeman, and I also spoke to Mrs. Ewing. And, um, they both, uh, actually Mrs. Bozeman was the one that gave us the reference to the other bylaws from the other schools. And if you remember correctly, when we were in our board training that we had last September, they said that it, they highly recommended that we had bylaws.
I agree with Mrs. Gonzalez that I have a lot of questions and, um, comments, and this is a lot to go through in one, in the middle of this, rest of this meeting. I also, I'm a little concerned. I mean, I'm not opposed to bylaws. I'm not opposed to Roberts rules. And I think bylaws are generally used to adopt Roberts rules within them or something of that nature. But I do feel like that, I, I don't recall that the board was, asked to be involved or when this committee was formed, it was, um, stated by the then-chair that she was going to do this, form this committee, and there was never a vote or any kind of consensus that I recall on the part of the board to, to even establish this committee. So I'm a little concerned that you all had Google meets or Google docs separately and that this document isn't, according to what you just said, Ms. Panzera, it's not all put together, ready for a proper review from us because there's pieces of it that other people did separately.
No, I, I, I don't think I ever said that it wasn't ready for review. I mean, we all collaborated together and worked on this over several meetings. And it's clearly stated, and I stated that when, you know, when I formed this meeting, that I have the right or the committee, that I have the right to do that without any votes. Um, that is one of the rights the chair has to do. And I can go back and, and cite that. It is in our policies and procedures, as well. So, you know, I mean, I think that we went through it very thorough. We reached out to resources, um, at the VSB. We reached out to other, uh, districts. We reached out to our Board of Supervisors. And, you know, I think they, they did an excellent job, put a lot of effort in it, and I think it was a collaboration of all seven of us.
Do you have documentation of the feedback that was received from VSB?
I have an email that she sent me the links to the, to the, um, other bylaws.
I think that the bylaws and the rules and procedures give the opportunity for the, the chair to have an orderly meeting without, having rules in place. It's for, it's for the good of the board. I don't think that this, who decided who to do what really makes a difference. Um, you had two board members on there. I wasn't one of them. But I think that the work is good. I think that you need to go through and discuss it, what, what you, what you don't want and.
I'm not disputing that. A lot of work was done and a lot of good work. I'm not disputing that or taking away from the other, the people on the committee. But I think as, I agree with Ms. Gonzalez that this will take more than time we have right now to go through it with a fine tooth comb. We just got it on Friday afternoon. So I'd like a little more time to review and make some notes. I didn't spend all weekend doing that.
So I would agree. Um, if I may, I would propose we settle on a, a date for a, perhaps a work session to review this in further detail to gain board consensus on the document, after which point in time we could have it reviewed by legal to make sure that which we all agree upon is in good order, um, at which point we could continue moving forward to adopt it. Um, I certainly agree the bylaws are very necessary. I think I stated that in our first meeting that that was an excellent means of adopting Roberts rules. Certainly agree we, um, should do such. I just care that we do it in a fashion that takes into account feedback from all board members, regardless of whether or not they were involved in the bylaws committee.
I, I, Madam Chair, I, I don't think that the, the whole contest between, I wasn't involved, I was involved, is really a pertinent conversation. I think that you have in front of you rules to manage this board, which we are desperately in need of, and it gives you the ability to do that. So I don't think it really matters who said it, she said.
Okay, I agree.
Move on and.
I agree. So I asked, would, is anyone else interested in having a work session to discuss these in greater detail?
I would suggest that if you want to do that, that, you know, we at least, uh, you know, have the committee members. Um, and maybe, you know, I thought about this, maybe the committee members should have been present and given a presentation. Because, you know, obviously, I mean, we haven't met since January and, you know, um, there's a, a lot of, you know, I didn't do everything in here. I, I set the format, you know, and, um, you know, we talked and conquered and divided. So, you know, if, if you're going to want to know specifically where something came from and, you know, I think that it might be the best interest to have some of the committee, committee members available at that time.
That's certainly a good idea.
Certainly could be invited to the work session.
Yeah. And I, I also think that it's important that we didn't have it all done by the board members, that we had our constituents, um, involved in it so that they could, you know, have input and also, um, make sure that, you know, the, the issues that they feel, uh, we have are, are resolved as well.
Could you refresh our memories, Ms. Panzera? Um, who were, who were the individuals that were involved in the committee?
Uh, it's at the end of the.
I know. Would you mind reading through who was a, a member?
And for why, may I ask? What's the purpose, Ms. Gonzalez? Everybody can read it. I think you have a personal ax here to grind and I don't appreciate it just because you weren't invited.
Madam Chair?
You're violating your own bylaws.
Mr. Collins?
There not been.
Ms. Panzera, let Mr. Collins make his statement.
I think the discussion needs to stop. I don't think it's relative to the, to the discussion. I think we need to move on.
I agree.
Madam Chair, may I suggest that, uh, we schedule a work session for this?
Certainly, Ms. Hawk.
Uh, our next regular meeting would be the 12th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is available to the board for a work session?
How about a good Saturday morning?
About not.
Also Mondays seem to work for us.
Mondays is certainly.
So I have.
Monday or Wednesdays, whatever.
Is there any merit to, to seeing if, if VSB could do a half-day, almost retreat work session with you in terms of, uh, the crafting of the draft? I, I don't know. I just throw that out. I know that they've been helpful in facilitating type of, you know, group processes and that kind of thing. It seems that's what you're, you're needing is some kind of facilitator to help, um, with the drafting. And perhaps they have experience with that and, you know, they could engage with you. I don't know. I'm happy to, to check that out as a possibility if that would be of, uh, help to the board.
I think that's a good idea. Others?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. So Dr. Benson, are you offering to do that? Or would you like?
No, I wouldn't facilitate. No.
No, I meant the contacting of the VSB.
See if Ms. Bowserman or somebody who specializes in that type of facilitation, particularly with school boards across Virginia, might be available to schedule a day for you and be there to help facilitate and support you in that discussion, discussion and the review of what you drafted thus far. And I'll be happy to call tomorrow.
Certainly. I'm certainly in favor of that. Anyone else? Okay, that sounds like an excellent next step.
So should we give her dates that would, might be appropriate, or should we go with her calendar?
Let me, if, if it's available, assuming then I'll house solicit dates from her that they might be available, and then bring a list back to you all, and you can then choose.
So, not to beat the dead horse, but during our last workshop, she said, why don't you have Robert's rules? It's ridiculous that you don't. And so can we at least pull that out so we could have an orderly meeting and approve Robert's rules without doing the whole bylaws?
So we've come this far. I, we have a draft that includes the adoption that would, as adopted, would include Robert's rules. I think that's a standard way of doing it. I don't see why. I mean, we've come this far. Arguably, we certainly have a ways to go, but is it not prudent to continue forth down the path of doing this the right way?
Well, my, my argument is Robert's rules are seven, separate documents. It's included as an amendment into that document. So to, to, the Robert's rules is steadfast. It's, you know, it's, it's out there for everyone to know what, what it, what it is. It changes very infrequently. It's just usually wording and so forth. So I, I don't know the why they're, they're, we need to kick the can down the road on the Robert's rules. What's the purpose of that? That's the question. What's the purpose of kicking it down the road?
I think it's because a lot of board members don't understand what's in Robert's rules, to be honest with you.
I think that's not a true statement.
I also agree.
Speaking for myself, it's not. I'm okay either way. With Robert's rules, we're waiting.
Well, so can I make a motion?
Before, certainly.
There's different versions of that.
Yeah, well, they, they
Mr. Collins, before you make motion, may, may I just ask a question? We are, we have been operating under the VSBA and King George County policies.
We're not operating under King George County policies.
King George, I'll clarify, King George School Board policies, which have provided for a minimal structure, if, if that's what you want to call it.
Loosely following.
I'm not sure why we need to do one ahead of the other. I, I think it, I think it's a document that need to be, needs to be reviewed as itself. It does contain reference and, and is supported by Robert's rules. That's my understanding.
Absolutely.
Robert's rules have been the same since January, when I, when I, when I, I made a motion to adopt it. Robert's rule hadn't changed since January.
But we did have a, I'm sorry.
It's not gonna change till November.
I do remember a board member stating, don't you think we need to know what's in it before we vote on it? That's why I'm saying that I don't think all the board members understand what is in Robert's rules. That's why it's a little bit more defined in the highlights in the bylaws and rules of the procedures.
If we were following Robert's rules, we wouldn't be talking about this.
You're right.
Okay, so we started out talking about the bylaws. Would we like to continue the conversation? Or shall we allow Dr. Benson to contact the VSBA and see if there is a time available to have a work session to review with the VSBA our bylaws?
My question was, do we need a motion to approve Dr. Benson's contacting her? Or should we just request? Okay.
Believe we can just request that.
I think that's, I think that's an, an appropriate move.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Moving on to our information items. Do we have any committee reports? Ms. Panzera?
None for me.
Hawk?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Oliver? Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear your No, ma'am.
Okay. I also do not have any committee reports. So next on our agenda is the CARES II funding.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several meetings ago, this board approved the acceptance of approximately 1.3 million in what is, what is dubbed CARES II funding that we know will be made, made available to our school division, just like other school divisions across the Commonwealth. As part of the accepting, we will, we will submit to the state just a proposed spending plan. Certainly, our experience has been that, you know, proposed spending plans can be amended based on needs that emerge, particularly funds like this where we have a period of time, multiple year period of time, in fact, to spend the funds. However, our staff has worked to develop, to brainstorm, to account for expenses on the horizon. We are aware of, in particular, and you have a document that has been provided, but expenses associated with the summer school, this coming summer school, an augmented opportunity in summer school as we are planning, a power scholars program that we have partnered with the YMCA in providing for some of our youngest students, any virtual summer school support we need for those families who believe it best for their student that, that an extended learning opportunity be extended virtually. And then we have other costs associated with, that are further out, you know, virtual cost for next year, should we have them. And again, given the, the discussion we had earlier, we just don't know the extent of those. So all that to say, we have certainly brainstormed possible categories, possible expenses, but it is just that. It's just preliminary brainstorming with really placeholder amounts that we believe are good estimates, should those needs reveal themselves as we, we anticipate they will. And then should we be able to then meet those needs in the way we plan? So I hope that, that helps to support discussion. I will say, I know there are ideas that a couple of board members have championed, certainly see the merit in, in the two that I'm aware of. In fact, the one, the bus filtration system is, is one that we have placed, put a placeholder in here. Again, that's, you know, there are, there are sides to that, to that concept that are pro and sides that would certainly be things we would need to consider as far as maintenance and filters and that kind of thing in the out years. But nonetheless, we have put ideas here to date. I know that in the case of one board member, the modular unit at Potomac may be a project of interest. I've recently met with Mr. Cusenberry about that, and we have gone ahead and contracted with Devon Porter, not Devon Porter. I think, thank you, thank you. Wiley Wilson, I believe, to complete the, to update or complete the study that they had proposed. You know, we, we, at the time that we were looking to initiate that work to define the scope of work needed so that we could put it out as a potential RFP, the CIP funding we would seek through the county to, to execute that project, of course, was halted at that point because of the pandemic. So now we may very well have a funding source, certainly if not with the CARES II, with the next, what we anticipate, the next round of support that may come to us federally. So anyway, I just want to account for both of those ideas. I know those were at the board's level promoted. They're certainly doable. We would just need a plan across this funding, which is more immediate in terms of our submission to the state for a proposed spending plan, and the next round of CARES funding to accommodate both, should the board see that as a path forward. So I'll be fine. I don't want to overstep or confuse you. But anyway, you have the CARES II proposed expenses that we'd like to submit preliminarily, should needs emerge or should we need to adjust our experiences, and we would be able to do so with communication to the state and to the grant managers there. I have any questions you might have, or I know that Ms. Hill is here. You know, she's helped lead up the effort to kind of collate these requests. But again, between she and I, probably more she because she's much smarter than me, we could, we could help answer any questions.
But you get paid more, so we should put you on the fire.
Good point.
May I, would you just remind me how, how long a period of time for expenditures this covers?
I believe it's two years, is it not? I believe it's two years.
Two years from acceptance, from acceptance?
Yeah. When do we, February, March?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three, I think, is the, just and remember, the federal fiscal year concludes
In
September.
Yes.
So that would most likely be the day.
Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Ms. France?
So from my calculations, it's $759,000. Well, it's actually more. That's just my rounded off number to support virtual technology and all this other stuff. So, I mean, I think that's a, a large sum to be putting towards that if, if it's not going to be what, what we're moving towards. I did not see, as you say, the project one board member championed, that would be me, to finish the modules that would actually fit into the CARES project because it'll give you more space for more children and other services. The 850 Chromebooks replace broken or lost devices. You have 850 kids that lost or broke devices?
Not necessarily 850, but we know the wear and tear has been much more significant this year. And so we'd anticipate the need to replace sooner than later for those devices. Going back to your previous point, I completely agree with you, Mr. Collins, and I, I think it, it fits with what I said earlier, that once we know, and we certainly hope that the number of students or families that choose the, the remote option is much less than, than is current. You know, we don't know that yet. Once we know that, we can adjust, certainly, the amounts or the quantities, which would adjust the amounts in terms of a lot of the virtual support, sort of the technology items, I should say. I want to clarify, the technology materials in particular. The virtual, understand that the virtual student support, I think that, I'm colorblind, so help me, but I think that's a beige or a shaded line there. The 180,000
Yeah.
is a placeholder for, you know, that could be if we contract virtual Virginia to accommodate students, if we need technology, as Ms. Panzera was talking about in terms of the, the owls or that type of thing. That could certainly be a source. And so we've simply put that as a placeholder item, amount. The needs then would, will emerge as time moves forward.
So the, the $200,000 for hotspots?
Right.
So we
Great example.
King George schools have solved board supervisors' problems, but, because they, they, they haven't been able to bring internet to the county in a successful manner. So we already put tons of money towards the hotspots. Why are we continuing to con, to contribute 200,000 more dollars?
Correct. And I fully expect that would, I would certainly hope that would not be the amount we would have to dedicate to renewing that subscription. If we had even, and I think this would be high, let's say we had even a third of the students elect for a remote option next year, then certainly we could then reduce that amount accordingly, as an example. So it's a good example to point out of something that's proposed today, not knowing all we need to know, but very likely in just a few months could certainly be amended, given the, the true number of students we're going to need to accommodate. We hope to know by the end of the school year for next, in preparation for next year. So I say that to say that there's certainly funding that is currently identified, given our current paradigm, that may very well change and could free up a funding source as far as Potomac modular and/or we might be able to use funding, at least in part from the next round in combination with this to accomplish the very same project.
We, we don't know how much the next round is, but
Don't know yet.
It'd be large.
I, I imagine it will be.
Do you know the numbers?
I don't know yet, no. As soon as I do, I'll pass it along.
Dr. Benson, in terms of following up on, on Mr. Collins' question, I think it's a, a very good discussion to be having because we were meeting the needs of students with hotspots for those students who did not have Wi-Fi connection. I mean, same with, with Chromebook. If we were not concerned about the, I guess, the illness, but, but we're more concerned about getting connection, connectivity, would we be better served to have a, to prepare central locations, whether it's Potomac or the old middle school, not, not seriously, but, but other locations in the churches, for example, as a hotspot center so that we could bus children to those centers if they needed to? I mean, it's, we, we don't want to, I mean, I'm, I'm sort of following up on Mr. Collins. We don't want to be providing Wi-Fi simply to be providing Wi-Fi for, for households. I mean, that, that is a supervisors and, and a, and a larger state-related issue.
Well, we're not providing Wi-Fi just for providing Wi-Fi.
No, no, no.
And we certainly wouldn't do that next year. It would only be, you know, I would envision, let's say we had 75% of our students come back, which I think would be low. I would hope we'd have closer to 90% of our students. Then we would simply re, re-up the subscriptions for the hotspots we would need in service to reach that 10, 15%. And that would certainly have, of course, funding decrease in this subscription cost. So that, that's a good illustrator where I believe funding could be freed from the current placeholder and be discretionary in terms of applying it to other projects such as Potomac, but we would not, I mean, to answer your question, I think we wouldn't simply renew subscriptions for all those hotspots, even though a vast majority of them wouldn't be used for schools since the students will be returning in person.
Right, right. Yes, you phrased it much better than I did.
Okay.
So the 850 Chromebooks, isn't that included in the operating budget for technology?
No, I asked Mr. Hopper that. No, those are exclusive.
So that'd be another 850?
Yes, and that's in anticipation, again, of the wear and tear that's been placed on those machines this year. I think it's proven. I think the Technology Committee has talked about the replacement of Chromebooks, you know, that we've invested heavily, what happens when the day comes that we have to refresh those machines. And we anticipate, given the use, the high use this year, that we may need an expedited replacement for those machines in addition to the normal cycle, so to speak. So that's why that was placed there.
Seems a little large in the, in the operating budget and in this, this CARES money. This seems large. I mean, as far as replacing broken and lost devices, that, I mean, what, what, are we allowing students to break and lose devices?
No, sir, no.
I've had a computer for seven years. I haven't broken or lost it. I mean, I don't
You're not a 12-year-old boy.
It's really the general wear.
I think that's, without saying, the responsibility that goes with the computers also comes with a cost.
We do not anticipate, just to make sure it's clear, we do not anticipate having 850 students broken or lost this whole. Again, it's related to the wear and tear that is much higher this year, obviously, given the, the amount of use they've seen than they would in a normal school year. That's it.
Any additional comments or questions?
I have one. So I think what I'm hearing is that we, we kind of have a list of most likely, and we have a list of possibly here. So, you know, and I guess it's based on moving forward with the plan, but as far as the most likely meeting now, sooner than later, I think that would be the summer school and the summer powers, the power scholars.
Correct.
So we have both of those every summer. Is, is this additional cost because we're anticipating an additional children?
Yes, that's a great question. And we are planning on hosting summer school sites at all schools instead of just, usually we've aggregated into one or two at a level. And so we are looking to expand the summer learning opportunities to try to engage those learners that we know we need a little extra with to start off next year. Certainly, that's not going to include everyone. We'll be, you know, a good year, maybe two, looping and building into our curriculum opportunities to revisit topics and solidify building into our curriculum opportunities to revisit topics and solidify concepts that, um, may not have been captured fully by some of our students in the remote setting. Um, but this does incorporate costs that, um, that we are planning because we want to augment our, what is our normal summer school model to capture more children. Not capture more children, but to, to engage more children that we know could benefit.
How about if it went to year-round school?
Keep it quiet.
So we're going to offer both in-person and virtual summer school, correct?
Yes, but again, I think, I, our, our emphasis would be, we would hope that most would, um, would choose the in-person. We simply just thought it prudent to, to put a placeholder there for the few that may medically need that or require that, so that we could accommodate them as well, and not just simply say, no, there is no virtual and exclude them unnecessarily when we have the funding to support them. But again, in saying that, our hope is that, um, the majority of students, we can accommodate in person. That's going to be most effective.
Okay.
So I have a question about summer school, just to tag on to that. So, um, so I believe last summer, summer, the Summer Connect program was offered not just to, like, targeted students, but it was open to all students, I heard? If they chose, was that not right?
Summer Connect program? And you may have to help me with that, Ms. Hill.
All right, come on.
The summer school program that we offered last summer was, uh, an invitation process based on students, um, that were, I guess, uh, selected by teachers, and then, uh, students were ranked as far as the media students that, um, needed the extra instruction during the summer. And so Power Scholars and Summer School was one program last year, and it was, uh, hosted at King George Elementary. And this year, we're hosting a separate Power Scholars program as well as a summer school program at King George Elementary, King George, uh, Middle School, King George High School, Potomac, and Seaston. So we'll have actually six programs.
Certainly, yeah. So will that again be by invitation, like in the same fashion as before?
Yes, um, we're trying to keep class sizes small so that, uh, number one, we can distance, but then also so that, uh, teachers can be more effective with a smaller group.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. Dr. Benson, do we know yet what Parks and Rec intends to offer for, uh, summer camps or programs? Have they issued, I, I don't, I haven't seen a bulletin come out yet. Do we know anything yet?
I don't know. Check with Mr. Clark, I guess, or, you know, you could certainly give them a call and see if they've published a booklet or opportunities.
Yeah, I, I texted, um, and received an answer that one was in process, but I hadn't seen any more. And, and I think that's partially in regard to, um, in many, uh, jobs, we hope, will be opening up, and parents potentially will be returning to work. So we need to, to try to coordinate all of the, the pieces of their, of the children's days. So it would be good to make sure that, uh, that perhaps, uh, before school, before and after, uh, school, daycare programs are, are available and would coordinate with that.
Again, we don't, we don't facilitate those, so I can pass that along to Mr. Clark with Parks and Rec. I'm not sure, did they have before and after in summer school last year, uh, at the location?
I don't remember.
I, I thought we just had the Power Scholars.
Power Scholars program last year was an all-day program. And so, uh, we were able to accommodate children all day, but our summer school programs are only half-day programs. We've not coordinated with the Parks and Rec, uh, program this year so far. We have in the past, as far as students that stayed, maybe, um, after school could go to a Parks and Rec program, but, um, we've not done that with summer school. Honestly, we're struggling filling all of the positions, uh, especially with Power Scholars right now. So, you know, teachers are tired and, um, we're demanding a lot of positions this summer. So, um, I'm not sure if we would, well, I know we wouldn't be able to also include a full-day program. We're just tapped out of resources at this point. Now, um, I, I'm not sure what Parks and Rec has, um, and if they could accommodate us at all of our sites as well. YMCA will still offer a program as, the YMCA has a camp-type program, but I haven't seen the bulletin from Parks and Rec.
But they have annually, I know, because I've gone down there and played with them sometimes, down in the cafeteria in our building.
Yeah.
You know, we get Google hoops flying and all sorts of basketballs.
Yeah, the two programs that are typically offered during the summertime are by the YMCA and, uh, also by Parks and Rec.
And I think it was, it was consolidated at the school board office there in that cafeteria area for Parks and Rec.
Right.
Dr. Benson, when, um, timeline-wise, when do you need, I guess, approval from the board, or what are the next steps for the, the funding?
I, I don't, technically, I don't believe the grant requires approval from the board necessarily. It simply requires this mission, you know, of at least a proposed, you know, which is what you have before you. So that's why this is an information item to you. I think we'll just maintain communication with the board, and should we realize when we begin understanding better the numbers we'll need to accommodate in one way or the other, um, and as these costs then, um, may fluctuate and, uh, we can communicate with the board, kind of updates. And then if there are other priorities we believe we should address, we can bring this to the board for your consideration and then.
So Dr. Benson, you proposed this stuff to the state. You had to come to the board for approval because you don't have authority to spend certain sums of money.
Right, so, and you're correct, if there would, if there'd be an expenditure associated with the funding in and of itself that would exceed my authority, then certainly that expenditure would have to be due. I, I just understood the question, um, there's no need to approve, like, a budget in whole at the board level. But Mr. Collins is right. Should, let's say we, we are able to entertain the Potomac project, there's no doubt that's going to exceed my authority. So I'd have to bring that to you as a board for your consideration and vote as an expenditure that would need to be approved.
So what is your authority?
I'm sorry.
What is your authority?
Up to fifty thousand.
That's what I thought. I have two additional questions.
Go ahead.
So, uh, the air filtration mitigation systems for the bus fleet, so, um, I had gotten that from the Prince George website, and they had noted, you know, their fleet is larger, larger than ours. And they had, uh, noted that it was, uh, fifty or sixty thousand dollars, so this is substantially higher. Have you considered reaching out to Prince George to see what their filtration system was? Or is this filtration system better than the one that I had given you information on?
I, I believe, not, not to be critical of what you had found, but we did discover that there are different types of filtration. The one that you forwarded to me, um, typically is used in more like emergency vehicles. It is a floor-mounted filtration system. We believe that the wear and tear with kids walking and buses and that type of thing, that we'd, we'd probably be better off looking at the ceiling-mounted, filtration system, uh, which we think is, we believe, based on just the research we did, is superior to the floor mounting system. It's more appropriate for the cabin of a, of a vehicle where children are going to be in and out, in and out, in and out, in that. So we would prefer, I know the transportation folks much prefer to have that kind of system installed versus the floor mount, where we think we'd be replacing broken things quite frequently. It'd be a better, a wiser investment to go ahead and get the more effective and more, the better fitting system for our use, at least for our, our application.
And then the other question is, um, for the paper products and packaging for meal service. So I guess this, this would be one that's a little bit contentious on, or, on, um, whether or not that service is still going to be provided, because I'm sure we return to school, that might be limited. And is this going to be going through the summer as well? Do we know any information on, on if we're going to be?
I don't know. To, to the extent I know, I believe it will extend. It's been extended through June, I believe.
Okay.
And I think you're correct, you know, if, if the students that we're serving meals to in terms of grabbing go, if, if a good number of them return to school, which we certainly hope, then yes, that would be another example of the cost that would be greatly reduced because we wouldn't have that need anymore.
Yeah, well, I know they need a lot of additional materials in the carts and everything they're, they're making do with, uh, you know, what they have, but, um,
Well, the reimbursement for the meals, you know, the meals, while free to the public, they are reimbursable through the, the federal program. However, a lot of the packaging that we use to, to deliver those are a cost that we incur.
Dr. Benson, and whether, you know, does Ms. Hill approach the podium?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not the summer food program?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just didn't see.
I think you answered the question, that she will be able to provide meals to students all through, uh, the programs for summer school and through Power Scholars. In addition, I believe she also plans to hand out meals, at least until, uh, June, uh, end of June, like Dr. Benson said. But she may actually be able to extend it. It's dependent on, I think, a grant.
Thank you. No more further questions.
All right. Any additional questions on the first team funding? Okay, all right, so moving on, superintendent's report. Dr. Benson, do you have anything else for us?
Yeah, I do. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, uh, excited. Tomorrow, we have a special visitor, or two visitors actually, coming, um, as part of their day to King George County. I'll be hosting, um, Dr. Lane, our state superintendent of public construction, um, and Dr. Myers, uh, one of his assistant state superintendents. They are visiting, I think, Northumberland County, Essex County, and then they're, um, in the early afternoon. Tough to pin down the time, depends on their first two visits, but, uh, they're going to swing by for a short visit with our folks at Potomac Elementary School. So, um, we'll be happy to welcome them to King George County and show off Potomac Elementary as a, um, example of one of our outstanding schools. So I just wanted to let you all know, uh, as board, let our public know that we're very pleased to have Dr. Lane join us tomorrow. That is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. It's very exciting.
Hey, shout out to our, our five-and-oh football team, too, but.
Certainly. All right, moving on to board comment. Uh, Ms. Pansera, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I, I had something prepared, but I, I'm not going to read it, only because, uh, things had happened at the board meeting tonight, which I'm, I'm very pleased with. But I, so I would first like to start with, um, Mr. Bradshaw and the Ki, King George Education Foundation. I think that that STEM initiatives is, uh, amazing, um, you know. I'm also looking forward to, once we get through the pandemic a little bit more, of also getting the CTE program back up and running. I don't think, um, a lot of people realize, but there is a huge, huge shortage in labor trades. You know, having an electrical contracting company myself and, and dealing with a lot of, um, building trades, there's just a huge shortage out there. And I know that before, uh, the pandemic, they were working on, um, a subcommittee for the CTE, and of course, all of that is kind of taking the backseat, so I'm really anxious to see if we can get that back up and starting as well. I'm also ecstatic at the fact that Dr. Benson mentioned getting the kids back in school in August, uh, five days a week, and, um, his comments about hoping that it's, you know, a high percentage rate. That's very encouraging, although, uh, I'm a little cautious only because of the pushback that we've gotten from other board members. You know, if the governor doesn't lift the restrictions, or, you know, uh, if we're having to go to less than a three-foot distancing and stuff. So I, I would strongly encourage the board that we continue this discussion and, um, you know, not just sit back and think that, you know, decisions have been made and it's finalized, because I don't really want to get closer to that August date, and then all of a sudden we have issues and we're scrambling at the last minute trying to figure out what to do. Also, I, I do want to thank the, the Bylaw Committee. I think they did a great job. Everybody worked well together. We put, um, all of our effort in, and it's really unfortunate that, um, some board members may feel a personal, discourse about it, either their feelings are being heard, or, you know, whatever, I'm not sure. But, um, you know, there's a lot of work going into it, um, a lot of research across the board with all of us, and, um, it's not something that was just haphazardly put together and, um, you know, wasn't well thought out. So I look forward to having the work session, I think having it with, um, the VSBA. I'm sure Samantha Bozerman will probably be involved. I reached out to her on several occasions and talked to her about it. And she felt that it was something that we were moving in the right direction, and I look forward to, um, moving forward with that. That's all I have.
Hi, Ms. Hawk.
I will do something uncharacteristic and be very brief. Follow-up to Ms. Pansera's comment, uh, about, uh, optimism, I too am optimistic. And I think what we need to say is, uh, to all the community, whether you have children in school or, uh, grandparents at home, please continue to be vigilant. Many of us have received our second shots, but I still wear my mask. I am trying to wash my hands routinely. We, we continue to be very careful, whether we're in the grocery store or Walmart, or wherever you are. The battle is not over, and if we want the children to be back in schools every day, all day, and we all do want that, then please, as a community, let's pull together and continue to wear your mask. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Just briefly, I'd like to, uh, recognize again Anita Davis and her staff, who I know have worked extremely hard and are putting out thousands of meals a week, I think. It's, it's a huge number, so they're doing a great job. Also, to the King George Education Foundation's new STEM initiative, um, I think that's very, very exciting.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. So I too support the, um, Education Foundation and their purpose. And thank Ms. Davis for her outstanding work and her, yeah, other employees that work in the food service that work consistently without complaining. Tonight, I've discussed a lot in regards to money and our budget and, uh, picking some things apart. I watched the Board of Supervisors meeting, every meeting, and the Water Authority meeting. And every, the gist of the conversations are is that everybody's asking for something. Fire Department is asking for nine people. Sheriff asking for two, Human Resources asks for one, you just go on down the line, every department. They're asking for people and products. And then the Water Authority, um, I'm just going to say is a disaster. They are, um, it's unbelievable what they say is going to occur, and they're underwritten by, uh, the Board of Supervisors, the county, and so I, I'm scared of how that's going to turn out. I say all that because I think this is going to be a very challenging year for the schools. There's been some money coming in from CARES that, that might be held against us. They might want us to use for some of these, some of these things. I've talked to several of them. I've cautioned them against that. I've cautioned them not to supplement, um, budgetary items for CARES money because it's not a prudent, way to do business for the future. They, they speak about they're going to lose the dump revenue in nineteen years, and it's already, all the money's already taken up. It's all debt service, so, um, I, I sifted through the budget to try to figure out what's going to happen. I don't know what's going to happen. We'll all find out Wednesday, at least, what their conversation is, but I'm not real hopeful. So that's why I discussed all this, these money issues. Thank you. That's the end of the comments.
All right, thank you. So I'm also very optimistic about what next fall semester looks like. Also, the information provided by Dr. Benson earlier today about the very low to nonexistent rate of incident in our schools definitely means we're headed in the right direction, both as a school and as, and as a community. So I find that very encouraging. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would also like to congratulate Ms. Davis on her recognition as a school meals hero. Um, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I would also like to congratulate Ms. Davis on her recognition as a school meals hero. I know that she and her staff have tirelessly kept the school meals program running for a, an entire year. And I know the many in the community rely on this service. So thank you to all involved with keeping the children of our community nourished. And also thank you to Ms. Inseth and Mr. Bradshaw for coming to us with updates on the King George Education Foundation and the new STEM initiatives. Um, congratulations to their newly elected officers and best of luck with their fundraising efforts. I look forward to next year when they come back with good news about all the new scholarships they were able to afford. Um, and the successes procuring STEM equipment for our classrooms. So all of that is very exciting news. And so with that, do we have a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to State Code Section two point two dash three seven one one point eight point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, substitute, resignations, and retirement of employees of the school board, I move we go into closed session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now in closed session?
Ms. Oliver, maybe you have the.
King George County School Board returned to open session and certified that pursuant to State Code two point two dash three seven one two D, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements on this chapter. Only such public business matters as are identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered in the meeting by the public body.
Do you have a second?
A second and certify.
Certify.
All right, certify. On favor, return to closed session, or sorry, to open session?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We're now returned to open session. Do we have a motion to accept the action resulting from closed meeting?
I think we accept personnel as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. We are now adjourned.